Mr. Schwartz, will you please lead us tonight?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Lee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Present.
Mr. Elliott.
Present.
Mr. Johnson.
Present.
Mr. Peterson.
Present.
Mr. Schwartz.
Present.
Mr. Smith.
Present.
Mr. Thurston.
Present.
Ms. Wiles.
Present.
Madam President, you have a form.
Thank you. We'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the July 15, 2025 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those minutes from July 15. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agendas presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Meticians or comments by citizens who are present. If you're willing to, wanting to speak, there are cards in the back on a table. Please fill that out and then bring it up to the clerk. You can speak at whatever item is on the agenda that you're interested in. Mayor Jensen, good evening.
Good evening, Madam President. Members of the council, great to be with you today. Just briefly, a few items of note, just as we work our way through the summer months. I want to just thank all of you for the continued engagement in our budget process. As you all know, we have to adopt our budget in the fall, but we start that process well early into the May-June timeline. And we've been working internally. Obviously, we have some budget constraints looking forward to the next couple of years, which is a great opportunity for internal assessment and review of what we're doing. And so our team is working diligently to provide you with a proposed budget that I think we'll all continue to be proud of. But I know all of you have been engaged with your department heads and the liaisons that you work with. So just thank you for taking time to continue to work with them on that. Just a few other items of note. The Noblesville Street Dance was canceled several week, it was postponed several weeks ago due to weather. The summer has been a little brutal in that department, but is rescheduled for, I believe, Sunday afternoon this weekend. And the weather is supposed to be much nicer, I believe, as of maybe tomorrow evening. We'll see if that actually happens or not. So encourage everyone to get downtown for the Noblesville Street Dance, which is a longstanding tradition in our community. And then finally, tomorrow is back to school for all of our friends at Noblesville Schools. So please, I would just tell you that, but also just to remind folks to be diligent and careful as buses make their way through our community and students make their way to bus stops. I know Noblesville Schools has been in close contact with us for months now as they adjust some routes due to the great opportunities of construction season that they're presented with this summer. I know my high schooler is excited to be getting on 15 minutes earlier due to dad's construction, so. But it'll be really nice when it's done. So I appreciate all that Noblesville Schools has done to continue to collaborate with us and make those adjustments. We know that we're making these improvements for the betterment of them as well going forward. So again, just be on notice tomorrow as people. I know our Noblesville Police Department will be on notice in school zones. So I would encourage you to be on notice as well. And then finally, next Friday is the grand opening of our arena at Innovation Mile. I know most of you have been in it. And we look forward to welcoming the public next Friday with a ribbon, or ribbon cutting. And then the State of the City speech is next Friday afternoon and look forward to seeing most of you there. But welcome, that's open to the public. We'll also be livestreamed as well. But would love to have as many friendly faces in the audience next Friday afternoon as we talk about the great things we have been up to over the past year. So with that, Madam President, thank you for the opportunity and happy to answer any questions anyone has this evening. I will notice again, 32 and Hague is currently closed in case you're under a rock currently. And we're about, we're about probably 25% through that construction. I would encourage you to go check out Matt Dowd. He's doing some video work for us on Facebook. He did a nice drone fly-through earlier of that. Kurt Meyer always seems to find his way into every construction site and takes some great photos as well. So it's been neat to watch the progress there. Certainly, when you see the drone flyover, you realize why we had to do a full closure. It's quite, it's quite the scene over there. So thank you for everyone for being diligent and patient with us and your neighbors.
Any questions of Mayor Jensen?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to council committee reports. Up first is the Downtown District Committee and Mr. Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. The Downtown District and Parks Committee met on Friday, July 25. We had a whole slew of people from the city, but also community partners that joined us for that. We talked about the status of funds. Two of those fund allocations will be on our agenda later today. That's going for our Embrace Downtown project, but then also an effort that we're undertaking to make Logan Street a little safer to cross. So everybody that goes to the farmer's market should be excited about that. We also kept on talking about enhanced downtown updates. Two dates for everybody's calendar. August 22 is the Main Street Business Summit. So that will be a big opportunity for the city and the community to meet and talk about progress that we're making on Embrace Downtown. And then the next phase rollout from the city will be on September 25. I'm sure there will be more to come there, but that's more of a, just to save the date for folks that are interested in the work that we're trying to do downtown. Outside of that, we talked about a few other updates, two of which were public art. If you go in the South Alley, there's a new mural outside of Bar Ellis. That was courtesy of my neighbor Rodney Reveal. He did a great job on that. And there's so much life in that alley now, which is really cool to see. In the southeast alley, I guess is what it would be, by Ninety Street Bistro, there's a Sister Cities mural. We had folks from Brazil and Italy that were here. And so we unveiled a mural that talks a little bit about our relationship as Sister Cities. And then, other than that, we just talked about a few upcoming events. I mean, really, the emphasis that we have on Embrace Downtown is what that committee was formed for. And so it's exciting to see that come forward.
Any questions of Mr. Smith? We will move on to the Finance Committee. Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. We met July 24. Aaron Smith, Thurston, and myself, Matt Light discussed the agreement for an extension of the Music Center ticket tax. And we had three fiscal actions, mid-year budget adjustments, presented to us by Tom McDonald. And Matt Light went over with us an update for the Arena Innovation Mile operating expenses. That and the claims to come to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Great. Any questions of Mr. Davis?
Madam President.
Mr. Thurston.
Make a motion, we approve the claims as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the claims as submitted. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much. We will move on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 21-07-25. An ordinance regarding encroachment ordinance amendments as amended. Denise Ashelman. Good evening.
Good evening. After the meeting, the last two weeks ago, Councilperson Smith inquired about the possibility of blocking the block parties.
If you could please speak up, we've got some noise in the background, so that would be terrific.
Councilperson Smith inquired about the possibility of waiving the fee for block parties after the previous hearing. While looking into the language relating to the fees for the three sections that moved from Chapter 94 to Chapter 95, it was found that the language relating to the fee for community encroachments was not moved from 94 to 95. So the version before you includes moving that fee to Chapter 95 and then also includes language that specifically waives the fees for block parties. So that would be instances, we have, I think it's the 1,200 block of Logan Street will call and close a block and have a cookout or just a community gathering. So it would be that type of, that the fee would be waived on. That is the only change to the draft that was before you at the last meeting.
Great. Any questions of Ms. Ashelman?
I'll just add a quick note there. That, the reason why I asked that was, you know, in a city of 75,000 people, we should be encouraging people to get to know their neighbors. And if we can do one step of stepping out of the way and make that a little bit more attainable for people, I think it's something we should do. So I checked with the mayor's office and with planning. It's not an incredibly significant amount of money that we are getting from that. So I made sure that the financial offset was there, but I think it just puts money back in the pockets and makes it a little bit easier.
Great. Anyone else?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to amend ordinance number 21-07-25 as presented.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to amend ordinance number 21-07-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance number 21-07-25 as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 21-07-25 as amended. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Terrific, thank you. Council to consider ordinance number 23-07-25. An ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the Downtown Development Fund for Embrace Downtown Professional Engineering Services and Enhanced Visibility Crosswalks from Federal Hill to Forest Park Trail. Mr. McDonald.
Madam President, members of the council, Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. And just a quick reminder of this request. It would authorize the city to use part of the cash balance that's in the Downtown Development Fund for two one-time purposes. One of them being to support the contract for the final design development of the Embrace Downtown project and then also for two enhanced crosswalks near Federal Hill. Again, there's revenue in the Downtown Development Fund to support these expenses and that this action would provide the appropriation authority needed to spend that. There haven't been any changes to the request since we last discussed it on July 15.
Any questions of Mr. McDonald?
I realize I should have brought it up in the Downtown District report, but this is part, one part of two things that we're doing to help with Logan Street. The other part, it'll be a signalized crosswalk. So kind of like what's over by Pleasant Street and by the high school, where somebody will be able to press a button, they'll have the flashers RFID, I think is what it's called. But it'll, for the people that are going to the farmer's market, it'll just make it a lot safer for people to cross.
Thank you. Okay. This is a matter for a public hearing, so I am going to open the public hearing for ordinance number 23-07-25.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
Seeing no one come forward, I move to close the public hearing for ordinance number 23-07-25.
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance number 23-07-25.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 23-07-25 as presented. This is a roll call vote. Ms. Lee.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
We'll move on to new ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 24-07-25. An ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the Cumulative Capital Development Fund to provide funding for information technology infrastructure and establishing a public hearing.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
This is a request to correct an issue in the IT Department's 2025 budget that's related to expenditures through the city's capital equipment lease program. And this is a program that allows city departments to finance the cost of capital expenditures over the course of five years. And last year, going through the capital equipment lease program process, the IT Department submitted identified needs for information technology infrastructure improvements and necessary upgrades for server equipment, firewall, and network switches. And so financing was secured for that purpose for 2025. However, a corresponding budget request had not been submitted in the department's 2025 adopted budget. And so this request would rectify that. They do need appropriation authority for this expenditure because the financing was secured. And the funding for this is from the Cumulative Capital Development Fund, which is a fund that's established for these types of expenditures, so capital expenditures. And there is a sufficient revenue and fund balance in that fund for this expense.
Thank you. Any questions?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to establish a public hearing for ordinance 24-07-25 at our next regular meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 24-07-25 at our next regular meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 25-07-25. An ordinance approving an additional appropriation in the Debt Service Local Income Tax Debt Sinking Fund to provide funding for the Levinson Garage Bond Payment and establishing a public hearing.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Madam President, members of the council. So this is a request to revise the share of local income tax that's budgeted for the debt service payments on the Levinson Garage Project. This project is, the debt service for this project is, has two funding sources. One being local income tax, that's around 80% of the revenue for that funding. And then the other is tax increment financing, or TIF, from the TIF district. And the, when this, the budget, the debt service budget was developed, one, it wasn't entirely known what that split would be. Two, there was a successful property tax appeal from the property owner that reduced the amount of TIF revenue being collected for these costs. And so what this ordinance would do, it would increase the budget for the local income tax by $100,000 to make up that difference. This was an issue that was rectified, that came up in 2024 and was rectified in 2024. Didn't make it into the 2025 budget. So we're coming back to you to get the appropriation increase today to resolve that issue. If you answer any questions.
Questions of Ms. McDonald. Mr. Johnson.
Ms. McDonald, yes. This is the garage portion of the project, not the apartment or the commercial downstairs, correct?
That is correct. It is the debt service for the construction project for the garage.
For the garage portion of that total project.
That's right.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to establish a public hearing for ordinance 25-07-25 at our next regular meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 25-07-25 at our next regular meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Very much. Council to consider ordinance number. Nine zero. Very much. Council to consider ordinance number 26-07-25. An ordinance for a change of zoning from I-1 Light Industrial to R-5 Multifamily Residential for approximately 4.75 acres, 650 feet east of Willow View Road, adjacent to the Midland Trace Trail.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Ms. Ashelman.
Good evening. Just because there's no address associated with this, here is the aerial photography to show you which parcel in question we're talking about. The request before you would rezone approximately 4.76 acres on the Midland Trace Trail. This, along with several other parcels, make up the former Noblesville Golf and Batting Center. That property is currently zoned I-1 Light Industrial, and the request is to rezone the property to R-5 Multifamily Residential. This is the first step in what will be a multi-step process with a number of partners. This property is one of seven parcels that the city is negotiating for purchase from the old Golf and Batting Center. This is a preliminary plan that was drawn up to just express some of the concepts that could occur on the property. This was done by a contractor for the city. And you can see the residential component. There's a park component. And in this instance, it connects into the existing Janus facility. The administration is supportive of the overall project and partnership and looks forward to continued collaboration. In that instance, we will be working with Janus, Real America, Bee Free Bakery, and multiple city departments to further the development of the property. The entire project would allow for expanded housing and employment opportunities for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities, aligning with the goals of the city's Advisory Council on Disabilities. It also allows the city to further a need that has been consistently listed as a top desired open space with the inclusion of a dog park and also allows us to continue a priority of activation along the Midland Trace Trail. The applicant has submitted a tax credit application for this project and anticipated award of that, those tax credits would be November 2025. They have been working with Janus since 2022 to go over the concept of the residential component of this project. The proposal is a 60-unit multifamily development. And I will just state, this looks different than the version I've shown you already. So these are conceptual in nature. They're to convey a concept and they will continue to evolve as we work through the process with the partners. The development would be leased to individuals making between 30 and 80% area median income, also known as AMI. There would be a portion of the units, 25%, that are reserved for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Those units likely would be used to serve some of the individuals currently using the Janus facility. The plans shown as part of this are very preliminary. The level of detail has not led itself to a full review for compliance with the requirements of the Unified Development Ordinance. In this case, those regulations would include not only the base zoning district regulations, but also this property is within the State Road 32 overlay, which was designed to have projects not turn their backs on the trail to actually embrace the trail as an amenity. And so those regulations will also apply to this project. One of the concept drawings appears to illustrate a vehicular connection that would take you from Willow View Road through to the Janus property through a series of private drives. This came up at Plan Commission, so I'll try to explain it as well as I can. So. What we, as a city, try to avoid is service of properties, multiple properties, not owned by the same owners through a series of private driveways. Our preference is a public road with, that's constructed to city standards. So in this instance, these parcels that are the main batting facility would be one owner. This would be a second owner. So our preference would be for a public road in that instance. The Plan Commission did hear this item at their July 21 meeting and sends this to you with a favorable recommendation of nine zero. There were four stipulations that were included. The first is that if development does not commence within two years, the zoning actually would go from R-5 to R-1. Any future development will need to come back through the plan development process for review. So it would come back to this body for review when they are ready with construction drawings that can be reviewed for compliance. And the third is the requirement for a public road if it crosses more than two private properties. And also that the site plans that have been presented are not binding to future approvals. There was no citizen comment during the public hearing at the Plan Commission. Our understanding is the applicant had a very well-attended public meeting the Friday before Plan Commission where they answered a number of questions for residents specifically within the Willow Lake subdivision.
Questions of Ms. Ashelman?
I don't know if this is more for Ms. Ashelman or the applicant, but what, what does the timeline from here out look like? Like, when do you think that would come back to us?
I will let the applicant answer that, because I don't know how much funding from the tax credits affects their timeline.
Sophie, will please come up, introduce yourself, and name and address, please.
Hi. Mike Serak, eighty-two fifty Dean Road, Indianapolis, on behalf of Real America Companies. Printed. Denise did a really, really good job of kind of setting the table for my presentation. I don't want to go through everything, because I know I had an opportunity to present to you two weeks ago as an introduction to council, but I can elaborate on some of the points that Denise discussed. The site plan that Denise showed, we've made some revisions since then, and as Denise mentioned, we did hold a neighborhood meeting with the Willow, Willow Lake community, which was hosted at Janus's office on the eighteenth, the Friday before Plan Commission. It was a great opportunity to meet some of the folks there. I believe there was twenty that showed up, got some good questions, a lot of just kind of general wanting information about what the plans are. And so one point that was brought up was, it appeared that the previous site plan that Denise was showing, there was, it appeared that this southern building on the site may creep into where the existing tree line is along Midland Trail. We made it clear that we have no intention of removing any trees, we think that that makes sense to keep them, have a barrier there, of course. And so this version actually, there's a forty-foot separation between the Willow View Trace Trail and our building, so this was moved north. And we've confirmed, at least on the GIS map, that that will be well out of the way of the existing trees that are there. Furthermore, you know, just a general overview of the site, the two buildings in the north would be two-story buildings, and the southern building here would be a two-story building as well along the Midland Trail. Each building here on the east and west side would be single-story. Every unit would have a balcony or a patio, and we are well aware of the design standards and the overlay districts that we're in, that three-hundred-and-sixty-degree architecture is important. We want this to be something that obviously is very attractive, that we're proud of, that the city's proud of, and of course, the residents that will live there. Furthermore, you know, safety is always a huge priority at any of our developments, but this one in particular will have even extra above and beyond kind of measures that we'll be dealing with, with just given the population that will be living there, being mostly folks with intellectual or developmental disabilities. So there will be buildings that, or there will be cameras at each building, and likely more than just one, especially where the two trail connections are. And then, of course, here's a centralized clubhouse here, there'll be active security. In addition, we have a full-time property manager that will be on-site during normal business hours. And even more so, you know, we're, our office is twenty-five minutes away, our VP of Property Management lives about five miles north of this property, so we feel that collectively we'll have a really good handle of security and safety of the residents that are living here. As mentioned, the central location would be a clubhouse. The proposed amenities we're looking at currently are a dog park for just the use of our residents, and allow the sports court and playground. Based on feedback with Janus, games are really popular with the population they serve, so we add the sports court there. Some of these are subject to change, and like Denise mentioned, with where we're at, these are very preliminary, and I'll show a few elevations later on, but this is a work in process, and we, you know, we certainly will be, you know, going into much more detail as we get further along and get past zoning. But like Denise said, we are requesting a zoning change from industrial to R-5 to allow for multifamily use. I'll go through these somewhat quickly, but this is just a bigger site plan, which shows where Denise was talking about with the road coming in. So this, I believe, is consistent with the current curb cut that's there off of Willow View Road, connecting to our site. Then you have the detention pond that you saw, which provides what we see is pretty good separation between Willow Lake neighborhood and our property. This is a summary, I know you've seen this before, but the unit mix we're looking at, there's sixty units total, eighteen one bedrooms, thirty-four two bedrooms, eight three bedrooms. And a point I really want to make as well is, with the tax credit financing that we're applying for and hopefully get awarded in November, the minimum amount of, or the maximum amount of units that we can set aside for people with disabilities is twenty-five percent of the units, so fifteen. However, there's no maximum on the number of units that can be rented by folks with disabilities. So if you recall, Tim White was here, CEO of Janus, two weeks ago, and he mentioned that they see an immediate need for fifty, or forty apartments for people that they're currently working with. With them being right next door, of course, we see them as the main referral source for these units. And, you know, this is, this will be the second project we've done in partnership with Janus. The first one was South Point Village in Fishers, which currently has a really extensive waitlist, so I believe up to four hundred households wanting to get in there, and I believe thirty-eight of which are folks with disabilities that want a one-bedroom, and then there's even more people with disabilities that wanted to get in a two-bedroom as well. So we feel that this unit mix we have proposed here, it captures a good range of folks that could live independently. You know, there's different ranges of kind of independence that these people have, and so there's a mix of one-bedrooms, but then a lot of two-bedrooms and three-bedrooms allow for opportunities for roommate situations as well. Again, so these, these are very preliminary, but I just wanted to show a sample of kind of the materials we'd be looking at using. This shows a mix of two different bricks, shake siding, horizontal siding, vertical siding, asphalt roof shingles, and then white fascia on the side. These put as well, but this is an example of the one-bedroom building. Those are just them zoomed out further. This would be the clubhouse building, and I'm just showing the brick will be used throughout the development. We do have floor plans and unit plans, I don't, won't spend too much time going through those, but just wanted to show, we spent more time digging into what the unit and the buildings will look like here. This is the clubhouse floor plan, so we have a large fitness center here, offices for our property management staff, as well as Janus's staff will have space to meet on-site with the clients that they serve. In addition, this is a community room with kitchen and bathrooms and a computer center, and I'll show examples of other amenities we've done in other developments. These are pictures from some of our other properties, so we have a bike room, playground, fitness, dog washing station, computer center. We will have ample bicycle parking, we realized that, you know, access to the trail makes sense to provide more than would be required in this location. This is a multipurpose room we've done at a different location that has been really well-received, and I think it'd be popular with Janus and their clients. Examples of some buildings that are currently in our portfolio, and this is South Point Village that I mentioned, where, this is on Lantern Road and near downtown Fishers, first development we did with Janus, and demonstrates the need for this sort of housing. Example of a one-bedroom, or one-story building development we did in Fort Wayne, which can be an example for what we're doing with the one-story buildings here. These are just other examples. You know the location, all the nearby amenities make this great. Meyer, actually, has been voted as one of the top employers for people with disabilities, so being right down the street from there, I think is a great opportunity, as well as all the other development and employment opportunities that are there. I'm sure you know, Janus really prioritizes employment opportunities, and we think with the overall development that's going on in this location that the city's planning, opportunities in the dog park and Bee Free Bakery and cafe could be really neat for these people to be working on. This just talks about the history, we have been working on this since twenty twenty-two. Janus put out the RFP for the site in twenty twenty-three, which we responded to along with the city, and we're selected. Aligning the city's goals of diversity of housing and housing for different demographics. Current zoning map. This is the unit mix. Pictures from the meeting we had. That kind of wraps it up, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you all may have here.
So I believe Mr. Smith asked what the timeline looks like. So are we, I would say, in somewhat of a holding pattern until you know about the tax credits in November?
Yes, so our application was submitted yesterday to IHCD, and then the announcements are made, the award announcements are made on November twentieth. And so we would look to close and begin construction approximately six or seven months thereafter. So we'd be looking at breaking ground and closing all of our financing and equity by May or June of next year, ideally.
And this page answered my question where it said, "Design and Site Engineering, December twenty twenty-five to March twenty twenty-six," which I assume in that period is when that would come back to us?
Yep. Yeah, we would work really closely with city engineering and staff on actual design of the buildings.
Other questions?
Madam President, I do have one question. When, you said South Point was the first one, when was that completed?
That was completed in fall of twenty twenty-one.
Okay. Thank you. Just as a side note, I went down there today, walked through it, dragged the mayor along with me. Architecture looks good, fits in well with the area there, walked inside. Saw the, you know, that it has the facility there for Janus as well, it's a really neat facility.
Thank you.
All right. We did have someone who requested to speak, so if you'll kind of hang out for a second?
Sure.
So Brian Clifford, if you'll please come up and say your name and your address, and you've got three minutes.
Sorry for bending over, but, my name's Brian Clifford, I live at six-nine-three-nine Trophy, which is just behind where we were speaking about. Can I say one unrelated thing real quick? On the way over here, I was hoping maybe we could get someone with a flag for traffic on One Sixtieth and River, because there's a lot of trucks that come through there, too, and it's very, very busy, and it's pretty bad there. But, okay, for this, I just have two quick questions, I'm not a good speaker, but I was wondering if we could go into more detail about the bakery, because I didn't really understand that part of it. And a question about the income levels, so if someone's at that thirty percent, how does that work if, if they can't cover that? I mean, what is the AMI? What is thirty percent of the AMI? If they can't hit that, do they get subsidized by someone? Who is that person doing the subsidizing? I know that's one question, but a bunch in there, but that's mostly what I was wondering. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You did fine talking, by the way.
That's right.
You did a great job.
And you wore the vest to impress the mayor, so that was good.
So I want you to go ahead and address this question.
Sure. I can't speak a whole lot to the Bee Free Bakery, as that's not the site that we're developing, but from what I've gathered, at least based on the meetings that were held going back two years ago, there is intention of having a Bee Free standalone bakery and cafe right near that trailhead that the city's planning to put in, but I know that that's may take some time to get to that point. We would certainly support it and think it'd be awesome. As it relates to the question about the thirty percent AMI rent, these are all income-based, and so this is not subsidized, the government's not paying the rent for these units, they're just capped based on the individual or the household's income, and as it compares to the area median income. So the area median income for a four, a four-person household is a hundred and five thousand in Hamilton County, and so, or a hundred and ten thousand, I'm sorry. So someone that could qualify for a thirty percent AMI unit would be making, you know, somewhere in the range of forty thousand or so, give or take, depending on the size of the household. And so I think the second part of the question, no one will be, no one will be paying that families or individuals' rent. You know, the financing mechanism of the tax credits makes it where we can, where we can build something like this and be able to set varying rental rates. So I hope that answers the question, but there'd be a range of different affordability levels, of course. So we're talking about twelve units at thirty percent AMI, twenty units at fifty percent AMI, and twenty-eight units at eighty percent AMI. Eighty percent AMI is truthfully what market rate rents are currently.
Okay.
I do think I can lend some additional information to Bee Free, and Matt Light can feel free to interrupt me if I do this incorrectly. So one of the concepts within the park would be to open a cafe, and Bee Free would be the operator for that cafe, and they would employ the people for that cafe. So it would be this building right here.
But that portion has nothing to do with what we're voting on.
Correct.
Just so you know. Just wanted to make sure you, yeah.
Yeah, just, they said Bee Free a couple times.
Yeah.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, so just to, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor, just to add a little bit more context to that, Bee Free's a local company owned by Jennifer and Mike Weese, who developed a food product originally for their son, and then they've been able to really spin this into a very successful gluten-free line of products. And you might have seen them at the farmer's market here in Noblesville and other places around town. They've already been engaged in a partnership with Janus for several years now, where they've had clients from Janus that have helped them with packing their product in the current clubhouse for the batting cages and the Putt-Put Center, so they're looking to just expand that, that relationship and that partnership, and working with, invest Hamilton County as well for some grant funding to assist with workforce training for those partners. So we've been working with them, there's going to be more detail that needs to be fleshed out on that and some of the other uses, but the, kind of the timing pressure that presented this was the tax credit deadline for Real America.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-six oh seven twenty-five as presented.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-six dash zero seven dash twenty-five as presented, this is a roll call vote.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Counsel to consider ordinance number twenty-seven dash zero seven dash twenty-five, and ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-two dash twelve dash ninety-five as amended, regarding Article II Definitions, Article VIII Zoning Districts, and Appendix C Official Schedule of Uses of the Unified Development Ordinance.
Move to introduce.
Second.
Mrs. Reed.
Good evening.
Good evening.
No changes to this ordinance this evening, the only thing is it comes to you with a favorable recommendation unanimous from the Plan Commission from Monday. This is July twenty-first. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Any questions or comments for Mrs. Reed?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance twenty-seven oh seven twenty-five.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-seven dash zero seven dash twenty-five as presented, this is a roll call vote. Please.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Yea, aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays, the ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much.
Counsel to consider transfer TA dash zero three dash twenty-five, a request for multiple appropriation transfers and the general funds. Mr. McDonald, come back up.
Again, for the record, Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. This transfer resolution includes two net-zero appropriation transfers from our non-departmental or contingency budget for two different purposes. One is a transfer to the Office of Finance and Accounting for the city's accounts pay- for the city's accounts payable software. If you recall, back in the fall of 2024, counsel approved official action to enable our office to purchase a accounts payable software. We didn't have one before. And that action came after the 2025 adopted budget was developed. And so this action would establish the 2025 budget for the accounts payable software. And then the second transfer in this resolution is a transfer to the Police Department budget. And that is to pay for leasing costs associated with their professional standards division. They were previously housed at 501 South 9th Street. And that lease couldn't be renewed because of the granary redevelopment project at that site. And so the Police Department found office space for them at the Blue Sky Building. And that this transfer would pay for the cost difference between their new lease and their old lease. Their old lease, they had a good deal. So it's just a cost difference between the two leases. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. McDonald?
Just a comment. This came up in finance. And just for clarity's sake, this is very temporary, not very temporary, but semi-temporary, as they will eventually be housed in the public safety building. So, yes, moving things around while we're waiting.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve transfer TA-03-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-03-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. 9-0. Thank you very much. That concludes our agenda. We're now to council comments.
Madam President, I just want to address his other comment about 160th and River Road. I drive that every day. I agree with you. We have a Roads Committee meeting on Friday. And Mr. Boyce and I will make sure that we talk about if there's anything we can do at that. The, the good thing is it's short-term. But I, I feel you. I, I have to drive it, too. And some days, it's backed up pretty good. Yeah, and outside of my jurisdiction, but we'll definitely be talking about it at Roads Committee to see if there's something we can, we can do temporarily.
It's also a county road, so I don't know. We'll have to talk about our roads. I don't know. That adds some extra complexity, so, but we will talk about it and see.
The good news is the city and county work well together when those construction projects are done. So I'm sure we'll be able to work something out if there's a, if there's a way to do it.
Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, very briefly, two items. A bit of celebration, was able to attend with Mr. Elliott and Ms. Wiles, the Sister Cities Celebration at the, last week. The students from Nova Prada Brazil and Citadel Italy were in Noblesville and had just glowing comments about the hospitality that our citizens showed them during their stay. And although Citadel is some, what, 800 years old, we're, we're newbies compared to them. But, but they do enjoy what we're doing and enjoyed our downtown and the vibrancy of our city and appreciate it, again, the hospitality. Item number two, had the pleasure, I guess, pleasure as hot as it was today, not sure, to attend with the mayor of the groundbreaking for the new Kittles facility out near Cabela's at Hamilton Town Center. And that new building, that new furniture showroom is going to be nothing short of spectacular. And the Kittles family is a very welcome addition in Noblesville. They're very, very proud to be here. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we are adjourned. Thank you.